Now, she got tied up in, um, in the meeting. She was running about five to 10 minutes late. Well, good evening. I would like to call the meeting to order of the East Porter County School Corporation Board for this Monday, December the 8th, 2025 Business Review. We all stand and pledge allegiance and we're going to the side. Wherever the regions sit upright on the United States of America and as you the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Mr. McFerrin, before we sit down.
Yes.
At this time, it's time for the student spotlight.
Okay.
So I would like to take us on a little field trip. And we're going to go look at the advanced manufacturing lab that we utilized the RDC money that the board approved there. So Mr. DeFreeze and Mr. Lichtenberger are waiting for us over there.
That's great.
Mrs. Schmidt is going to lead the way. And I will come up as the tail. Because we're going to walk right through the elementary to the lab that they're utilizing.
Great.
Mrs. Carter and Mrs. Finer are going to stay back.
You can go if you would like. If not, they are going to live through it all over here.
Gets a little extra steps in there today. Try to get to that 10,000 minute.
Did they go there? That he told me 10? Yeah, that's, that's, yeah, yeah, alright. Good, thank you.
There was a couple more on this. There will be another person training.
Well, yeah, I have some people from Herschel's supposed to be here, possibly Task Force Tips. And, uh, Stu McMillan, the former owner of Task Force Tips. I told him that or through door 10, about 5:30. So.
Great.
It's good to start.
Thank you all for being here. I really appreciate this. The US administrators, we always look for ways to try and provide more. And this is really kind of a brainstorm. A lot of it had to do with Mr. Lichtenberger and all the things that he's kind of looked at and saw as potential here at the school. It's provided an opportunity for kids, which you're going to see here a little bit. It's going to be great for to show that, give them the opportunity to show you exactly what they're learning. But, uh, you know, it gives them opportunities for school credit. Gives them, and these students take classes that didn't ever have a picture before. And it gives us an opportunity to do some things here if they just don't have to go to Career Center, right? The program, because that allows them to still get the programs they want, but at the same time, be our students, be with us and not lose the time for travel and everything. So, uh, I think it's hard for those kids, you know, when they're trying to get all the education they need. I commend Mr. Lichtenberger a lot because of the time and energy and effort that he put into this to, uh, not only, not only to fund this, but also to look for dollars, grants, and all the things that he did. So, not to learn anything from me. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Lichtenberger.
Last September, I can't remember what it was. I came to school and asked you guys to say, you know, I'd like to start this program. Do I have your permission to look into it, get things going? Yeah, go ahead. So I went out, tried to get some grants. Uh, one grant that I wanted didn't happen. Dr. Case came to me later in the year. The program was dead. He said, you know, we do have a grant, $70,000. We do this with $70,000. I had no idea. So, uh, because what originally was looking for is $125,000. So I went back to the, uh, companies that saw I have to teach this. They said, yes. So that was great. Uh, that was beginning of my long hours and pull my hair out. Trying to figure out how to get this thing going. So, purchase the equipment. I spent a week down in Jeffersonville training on some of it. A week wasn't really long until I found out. Uh, then all the Ivy Tech, found out then I had to take four courses to be certified to teach this class. There's a lot of, a lot of stuff that Ivy Tech didn't tell me prior to starting. They were all fired up. Yeah, I think this, this would be great, all these things. Yeah, well, um, yeah. So behind here are my four certifications, uh, safety, quality, maintenance. Uh, I can't remember all of them. They're all right there. Uh, Ocean 10, I had to be Ocean 10 certified, which our students are currently in the process. Some of them have finished, they're Ocean 10 currently. Uh, some of them already have the industrial side. So I gave them an option to do the construction side. So they're both Ocean 10, construction and industrial, some of them. Um, most of them will be all Ocean 10. That's part of what Ivy Tech requires us to do with them. Ivy Tech, when I, when I came here to Calhoun, we did a program of advanced manufacturing with Ivy Tech. It was all online, all e-learning. It's okay, but then it dropped the program. So I still continue to teach advanced manufacturing. I just did my own things to supplement and so on and so forth. I decided, I'd really like to get back into this and do it. What, what's, what if you change? I said, well, what you need to do is you need to be using the Amatrol software and equipment and software. Great, you know, that's no problem. I use the, uh, software. They didn't tell me I had to take four classes and a bunch of other things. But we got that accomplished and finished and, uh, we're ready to roll with all that. We've been teaching 101. I finished that a couple of months ago. One and two, I just finished certification there and we're going to get that going. Uh, so to start things out, we were working on 101, which is mostly e-learning. And the guy said, you know, getting tired working on computers, nothing else we can do, you know? So 102 gets you into lab. It makes us really unique. We are the only high school in North West D M doing this. The only. We're the only one as a facilities who do what we're doing. Or they're just trying to do this, they don't have the facilities. So when I talk about facilities, they don't have a lab set up like this. They don't have the lab like I have down there in Chapel. We have bandsaws, we have rolling brooms, which is all part of teaching 102. They don't have that. Career Center does not have that. We're the only ones, which I didn't really realize until I got involved with this. We're the only ones that can do what we can do because of our facility, which makes us really unique. Sometimes it's better to be lucky than doing it. And that was part of what we are. A couple of years ago, for example, machine shop teacher asked me if I wanted to be CNC trainers. And I thought, ah, yeah, I'll figure out something to do with those things. You know, as a teacher, you're kind of a fat rat. You know, you can get what you can for free. Well, part of, uh, any of that 102 is teaching CNC training. But it's online, it's, um, e-learning. Well, not only can we do it now, e-learning, we can actually program with these CNC machines. Got those for free, that was great. Uh, the other thing, a couple of years ago, I was at the old McGill's, uh, what did you get? I can't remember what it was after McGill's, it was, yes, Emerson. So they asked me, do you want any micromers? So I took about 20 micromers, which teaches precision measurement. So the guys were tired of working in labs. So one of the programs for 102 is American Steel donated steel for us. Um, they have to drill and tap a hole. They have to drill counter sink, counter door, cut threads. As you can see, only missing one counter door. I thought that was pretty good, only have one, damage to broken. There were three taps that were broken. So that got a little expensive to teach that lab. But, uh, they had a real good time. They learned a lot about how to use the tools, machines, counter door, counter door was, creating a hole, cutting threads, both internal and external. And we just finished that lab just a little bit ago. And now we've been working on the labs in here. So what we're able to purchase is, I call this, they call it a mechanic's trainer. I call it Ferris levers and bolts. And that's exactly what it is. Training the students how to work with Ferris levers and bolts. All the math, the law, the field, really working on the textbooks. Over here, we have an AC DC trainer. Then we have electric, oh, no, this is a relay. This relay trainer, we, uh, were able to get Task Force Tips. They're giving this to us alone. What was nice about this, they came with their PLC trainer. And we also have a, uh, what is this? An electronic sensor trainer to go with it. So they donated that. And they also donated another, uh, AC DC trainer. So we've got two 101 stations. Great. Uh, plus the X with the PLC and the sensor. It's actually quite a bit of money involved in these two analogs. Uh, so we're pretty fortunate there. And the other purchase we made was the skill loss, which is students using. This is a whole body arm. Um, there's a lot of things that goes along with this. One of the things we're going to be doing today is lockout, tagout. Those show you how this operates with sensors. Some of the other things that we can change, the belt drive, the gear drive, we can change the shafts. There's a lot of maintenance involved when you see this particular machine right here. So there's a lock that goes into using this to the skill loss. And my plan with the students is when they're in here, we'll do as, we'll start it. They'll be divided up like you see here. Just rotate around different workstations. Along with this, there's, uh, textbooks that they'll go through. There'll be labs that they do, questions that they'll have to answer. Then on top of that, then there's tests that they'll have to take after those sections are completed. It's great for the students to work with, I can tell you right now. So I told them, we're in the beginning, I said, look, this is all brand new. I said, you're going to learn, I'm going to learn. I'm going to make a lot of mistakes, going to help me make, make this class better for next year. Maybe brains work with it, and I'm sure that it's going to happen. We're all working together. Like I said, there's a lot here, it's a lot involved, a lot for me to learn, a lot for them to learn as well. But, uh, it's going to be a good program. They'll get credits. Uh, there's tests that I can take, two tests in, uh, 101. One is quality, one is safety. And 102 is maintenance and 101, I can't remember. Has to do with maintenance as well. So they'll have to be certified, they're going to be done. So, uh, four certifications, six hours of credit, plus along the line their Ocean 10 card. Now, I don't really know what that Ocean 10 card does. I haven't talked to anybody in industry, but they're going to happen. So, you know, they go somewhere, they've got that Ocean 10 card, it's been for life, and, uh, they've worked it here. So, you know, there, there's a lot that's going to happen this year with this class. Oh, here and my other lab. Very fortunate to have this facility. And again, you know, being lucky sometimes is a good thing. We needed a room. When I take a look around here, this is the old sewing room. What do we need? We need electricity. We need a lot of it. Outlets in the floor and space. So, uh, this room is going to work out great. The other thing that's going to happen is, uh, Stu McMillan, the former owner of Task Force Tips, I work with him. He's been in Spur Mall, he helped me get into Task Force Tips and twisted the arm about a million, this, this equipment. Um, he has worked with Ivy Tech, he's on the board of directors. So in Michigan City, they had a motor control unit. Now, the software to use that is called Lab Bolt, um, which Ivy Tech no longer uses. But the unit itself is good. So he picked that up and I'm going to get it picked up and deliver here. So we'll be able to teach motor controls to the students. No matter if it's supplement, because, because it's Lab Bolt and that, um, this equipment, Amatrol, Ivy Tech will give the students credit. But they do have a motor control unit or an Amatrol. So should they go to Ivy Tech, they'll have that experience and have that understanding. So we're going to be adding on to this and still trying to twist the five arms at, uh, Task Force Tips. They still have a couple more Amatrol trainers, a little harder trainers, and again, having the use as a tool. So I'm kind of twisting that arm a little bit, saying, hey, what are you guys going to want to do with this? You know, can you loan them to us? And that's how we got these trainers. They said, if you loan them to us, and if you need them, we'll give them back to you. Not, not a problem. So finally, they kind of said, well, yeah, I guess we can do that. And, uh, we were fortunate enough to get those. He gave us, you know, four workstations as well. So it's come along with me. It's so fortunate, great people to work with, great people to help us out, uh, giving us some things. And it's so easy to work out. I mean, we could have gotten better help, better luck, uh, and better people to work with. So, you know, very fortunate here to have these. We've got some students here, going to some labs today. Looking around, taking a look, ask questions, taking a look at the books they're going to be working out of. Uh, I'm excited. I was excited when I asked you about the starting this. I'm just excited now. I think this class is going to come years on my life. I didn't take it, or, but, uh, I don't know which, but, uh, it is good fun. It is good fun. I love doing this, I love starting new programs. Uh, it's been a lot of work, but, uh, it's rewarding and it's fun. Uh, these guys are going to enjoy this and we're going to work together. And that's what's really important as well. Before we get started, I just want to emphasize, this is the Christmas crowd. And that's what became me, because I'm thinking about starting a new program. When you're saying, I was like, sure. Because it's going to take a while. And I know that you're getting close with me. That they point us, and he goes, no, I want the law. I want the law department. And so he's, he's understanding a lot of time and energy that I've got into this. Because periodically I get emails saying, hey, let me try to do this. Either way, they can tell me it's going to cost this. So, but at the same time, I want to commend you for helping. Energy towards this going on. I did not take those. Yeah, we've got some donations, uh, third pool diner, and some ice. These guys went to, uh, summer testing and some of the, uh, field shit. Ten student known was crucial in helping us get started and getting the equipment. Um, Task Force Tips given its equipment, Herschel's as well. I've known him for a while. When I was applying, looking for grants, I needed people in industry, uh, to use as a reference. So, Gordon, Herschel's, Stu McMillan, all great points of data, you know, use this. So I said, did my name in, mentioned breakfast committee. So, uh, they were great, great people to work with. Uh, a lot of people helped us get this going and, uh, we'll continue it. I think it's going to feed in the industry really well in this area. These guys are interested in it. And the students can come, will benefit from this break. And we've even talked to Aaron and I, said, you know, how can we offer this? I know this has been on the board to, you know, to schools. And we're working on it. We talked about it. Uh, I'd like to see that happen, uh, just to see what, and I'm sure you guys will as well. Just takes time, patience, never. Uh, we get there, we get there, we really will. Yeah. It's very difficult. Yes, yeah. So, you know, I have something we want to do, and I want to do, and I'd like to give this program. So ask away questions, look around, take a look at, you know, what you're getting for your money. That's why I think you're here, to see, you know, what we've been able to do. Really, yeah, yeah, yeah. And I got to tell you, we're so fortunate to have this lab, the other lab, be able to do the things that we need to do for 101 and 102. Career Center can't do it, their teacher is licensed. They just have a little area like this, they don't have the lab like we do down there. Or you, or you couldn't even find some of their equipment last year. Then that's how bad that was. And then they don't have, their teacher's not certified. They don't have the lab like we have down there, and teach welding part. They can't teach things like this. They don't have micromers to do, uh, precision measurement. And some of that, to be honest with you, is dumb luck. I was in the right place at the right time, said, take one of my micromers. Alright, yeah, I'll figure out something to do with them. And, uh, we did. I got about 20 of my micromers, different sizes, and I was decision making. Uh, because I don't know my micromers. It's not one, my problem with putting kids, you know, everybody's going to have their own. So those are all good things. So I'm really excited about getting this thing on and hour and more and getting these students involved, so.
Not a big.
No, certainly, I asked questions to pick my brain what's left of it. I, yeah, I, I don't know. I mean, that comes from the other end.
Alright, yeah, so that's our vault, we're going to have a lot of them. And then what I'm going to do is a nice switch, maybe switch to like one position. It's supposed to be hot. Then there's the thistle. Right here, right here. It goes, uh, it goes into the little like box, if you want to call it, that puts it in. This is how I'm in, that's how the piece, you know. So basically, I'll throw it in there and throw that in. So now, it's not going to shake. That was all way up here. And then, that's, yeah. I'm going to do three blocks. Yep, and then, uh, a lot of yards I got for, like, there. So, got, like, a whole, yeah. My hair, and you get one of this one. And then, I got another block here. Yeah, so, and out this, this small step, maybe, probably on. And then, like, working street, got, I'm, I'm, all people, so I have to, have that block up like I'm. So. So as soon as you turn on, it'll throw the air code, because you don't have the control power on. That, this stuff right here, so certain alarm, that turn on. This is on now, so you go to cheap operations. And then if you just want to run all four of the blocks, throw on, uh, foot ball tie, and then it'll hold on when you're up the system. You're trying to block, you're trying to. You're. Yeah. I know, I know. You know, I don't know, I would have been more last one. And you know, those are great. They probably just don't know where to like. It's a common thing, I've got. People, you know. And if you're. Every, every, each of us, when we, when we're very, very. I don't know. What Florida, I know, they're fired on the way. I'm saying. It's suffering. So we. Guys, the friends, so. Next, everyone. I work here. It's all. I'm, 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 I'm. I don't know what's going to be the bottom, the next goal is starting, we did that. Seventy-five, we're doing that. That's some work, yeah. So it's a guy. I'm actually, I. So. I know.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, I need to be that guy.
Cheers. Well, there are exciting things going on in East Porter and at Houss. Very exciting. So now we'll get back to the agenda, and now it's time for a public input.
Can anybody sign up?
Anybody? No, okay. Well, the next items on the agenda is Items 2A, Approval of Minutes Executive Session. Item 2B, Approval of Minutes Business Session. And Item 2C, Financial Matters Payroll. Item 2D, Financial Matters Claims List. And Item 2E, Approval of Personnel Report. Do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda? So by Mr. Martin, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mrs. Starr. Is there any discussion, questions, comments?
I have a question as to 2A, the approval of minutes for the executive session. I was excluded from that meeting, but it stayed absent. Can that be updated to state that I was excluded as opposed to absent, like you did the last time?
Sure, I, you have no problem with that.
I also wanted to know if any school board members had requested any invoices that were tied to this month's length list? I had a couple of questions about that.
I don't, I, I have not requested, and I don't know if anyone else has.
Okay, I have a couple of questions about that. There was an employee on here that, the name did not sound familiar to me, that was getting over nine hundred dollars in mileage reimbursements? Stephanie Cooper, mileage reimbursement for nine hundred and seventy-five dollars? I just, I've never heard of that employee, and I wasn't.
It's not an employee.
Okay. Can you give us a little bit more information about that?
Uh, well, can't go into individual, we should not be talking about individuals. However, I will tell you that periodically, because of special education routes, we do reimburse some parents for special ed transportation back and forth.
Okay.
So it's not necessarily at a monthly period, sometimes it's over kind of period, sometimes.
Well, I understand we're not supposed to be talking about personnel issues or things like that, but when these are, these were made to the public, so everybody can see all of the mileage reimbursements. So her name is listed in public right now, I did want to point that out.
But we will have to check on that.
Okay, and also, our transportation director, we had purchased a vehicle about a month and a half ago for her, and I still see that there's some mileage reimbursement here on, here listed, that we're going to be paying out.
Correct.
Could you tell us a little bit about that?
Sure. The, to get the plating and the insurance, there were a couple of days that weren't, not there yet, and we may see some additional, because she is also one of the individuals that helps me in the morning do road checks. And the vehicle that we have here is not necessarily four-wheel drive. And so when she's leaving from her house to do road checks, she utilizes her four-wheel drive personal vehicle for that. So that could still have some.
What's the policy regarding employees leaving from their, from their home, using their personal vehicles? Are they, are they claiming mileage reimbursement throughout the time they leave their home, or to the nearest school? Because I thought that it was from the school, could be claiming from their actual personal address.
I will have to get back to you on that, I'm not necessarily sure where she started. But I do know that I have authorized her to utilize her vehicles, especially on those snowy roads, because her vehicle's four-wheel drive.
Right, okay. The other question I had was that earlier this year, when I had requested invoices, and I didn't have an issue getting those invoices, I was given an invoice for Blackout EZ LLC, that was a line item, a line item invoice. And I see that on here, we have Blackout EZ LLC, fixed equipment, thirteen hundred dollars. Can you let us know a little bit about that?
I cannot, because I do not know what that is.
You don't know what?
No, I don't have, I do not have detailed information in front of me.
Don't you think that that should be something that we should have when we're voting on a claims list of over a million dollars?
We have a claims list of over a million dollars every month.
Doesn't make it right, though, does it?
Okay.
Any other questions?
Sorry. I don't have any other questions, other than I think that it's negligent that I, you know, I still haven't gotten the last invoices I requested, so that we can be fully informed, policy eleven oh two, or ethics policy, says that you shouldn't be making decisions without being fully informed. And I don't feel as board member that we are being fully informed.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? We'll see them, I'll call the question.
Oh, wait, I have one more question, sorry. This was, this has to do with a personnel report. I see that you did create that new position. I did look at the salary increases for some of the different positions, but I did notice that the new position that was created, which was called the Operations Coordinator. That salary, so for every other salary, that, those salaries were listed, however, that person's salary was not listed.
She's not giving you a change in salary.
Okay, but shouldn't that be listed on the?
No, because it's not a change.
But there's a spot for it there, and it's empty.
It's just, she just fill it out for whatever you're changing. They're changing location, and they're changing salary, they're changing position, whatever it is, how they put in what, what we're changing.
Okay, but.
She has no change in her.
Just based on what I've seen in another position, where we had a teacher move in Houss from being a teacher to an athletic director position, that was another situation where that person's salary was not listed, and it just stated per agreement with Dr. Case. So I just want to make sure that we're not just.
Same change in her rate.
So why isn't her rate on there, then?
Why is it? It's just like, it's important, this information.
You may not think it's an important piece of information.
Okay, we're not going to get into any arguments tonight.
This isn't an argument.
I'm going to call the question.
Wait a second.
No.
Eleven oh two says that we should not be voting, unless we have the information.
I'm going to call the question. All those in favor of the consent agenda consisting of Items 2A, Approval of Minutes Executive Session, Item 2B, Approval of Minutes Business Session, Item 2C, Financial Matters Payroll, and Item 2D, Financial Matters Claims List, and Item 2B, Approval Personnel Report, signify by raising your hand. One, two, three, four, five, six, oppose, same sign. Motion passes six one. Next on the agenda is Action Item 3A, Approval of Resolution 2025, to close 2025 year end. So this is a right, a resolution that is legally necessary to take annually to accurately close the school corporation's books. So we ask the board to approve it as presented. Do I hear a motion for Approval of Action Item 3A, Approval Resolution 2025, to close 2025 year end?
So.
Moved by Mrs. McCall's, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mrs. Starr. Questions, comments, discussion?
Going back to what I just stated earlier, I don't think that the board has been provided enough sufficient information to be signing off on these approval of expenditures of checks, things of that nature. Just want to bring something in.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Sign them and I'll call the question. All those in favor of Approval of Action Item 3A, Approval Session 2025-15, to close 2025 year end, signify by raising your hand. One, two, three, four, five, six, all pose same sign, one. Motion passes six one. Next item is 3B, Approval of Resolution 2025-16, to add position to PERF.
So the position that the board approved at the last board meeting for Food Service Operations Coordinator is not a, has not been in position here before. So the board has to formally approve them to also receive PERF, being that the individual is already a PERF recipient. We're just trying to make sure that we have student bookkeeping, so that, and we can receive PERF. Okay.
Do I hear a motion for item? Go ahead.
Good. I'll make a motion to approve Action Item 3B, Approval of Resolution 2025-16, to add position to PERF.
And move by Mrs. Starr, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mrs. Moore. Any questions or comments?
Is this form that was passed over to me, this East Porter County School Corporation Resolution, is this the one that we're voting on right now?
No.
That's the 3A, okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Any questions or comments? Then I'll call the question. All those in favor of Item 3B, Approval Resolution 2025-16, to add position to PERF, signify by raising your hand. One, two, three, four, five, six. Oppose, same sign?
Just don't have enough information about it.
Motion passes six one. Next, item on our agenda is Item 3C, Approval Policy Analytics Financial Services. So in front of you, we have a proposal to bring on. So in front of you, we have a proposal to, um, bring on policy analytics for some consulting. They will be able to do a parcel by parcel analysis that will give us exactly how Senate enrolled Act 1 will impact us. We'll be able to utilize that for, uh, future planning. And additionally, they will also be able to make some recommendations of how we might be able to, um, move some different things in our, in our funds to help us be more efficient. Do I hear a motion for approval of item 3C, approval of policy analytics financial services?
So move.
Moved by Mrs. Star. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mrs. Moore. Any questions or comments?
I guess my only question is, is, is our only option to hire them for five years?
No.
Hire them for one year instead of five. Is this a one-year proposal? Is this a proposal for one year or for five years?
That is my understanding, but they'll be able to go through and give us, um, a five-year analysis.
Well, I thought I read that. I also thought it said $20,000 annually for five years.
That's not what it says?
I thought that's what it said also.
Because I was hoping it was only one year because that was not.
Because that's, that was our plan.
Okay.
And what, can we approve it with that caveat?
Just to ensure. The second have to. Does it, because I, because I.
Yeah, I don't see the five-year.
It says $20,000 annually.
It's like if you read more down, it insinuated it. I don't know.
So it, it just wasn't clear. It may not have said it. It certainly wasn't clear.
We have so. What's that?
On the big page four or five. Has the fee structure listed?
Correct, but it doesn't say whether it worked right.
Yeah, but it doesn't have a term. I didn't see a five-year in there, but.
How would Mrs. Star like to restate her motion, rescind this motion that she made? Well, just clarify. She just clarified her motion. Okay. So you're just going to say for one?
Just committing to one year. Yeah, her committing to one year.
Yeah, that's all we.
Yeah, that's what I wondered. That was my question.
So you're going to restate the motion to save one year?
So I would, uh, propose the motion to pass 3C for a term of one year.
Okay, and Mrs. Moore, would you second?
I second.
Any further discussion or comments?
And this will get us down to the per parcel impact rate that we'll be able to make available to everyone in the district so they can see how this.
See what that final number is.
Excellent.
If there are no more questions or comments, I'll call the question. All those in favor of approval of item 3C, approval of policy analytics financial services as amended for just one year, signify by raising your hand. 3, 4, 5, uh, it's, uh, hold the same sign.
And then I just don't cover that. The last thing we mentioned about this was given to us.
Okay, so motion passes 5-2. Next, action item is 3D, approval of property insurance renewal. So in front of you, you have the renewal policy. I will tell you, we are still working with the insurance because it came back significantly higher than what we anticipated. And so what I am presenting tonight, because we still have to have our insurance policy, is January 1 is when it starts over. So they have, um, come back and we are able to save about $6,000 on our, um, workman's comp. However, for our general policy, the umbrella package, uh, we are still trying to get better numbers. I'm working with the insurance company from claim by claim because some of the claims that we have had or pending claims are kind of, um, adding to it as well. So we are going back and forth and seeing what we can do to get numbers. So I'm asking you to approve this tonight, knowing that this will be the maximum. But we will continue to, um, work on getting lower prices, which we can amend in January. It won't be any higher. It will not be higher. Do I hear a motion for approval? I approve the approval of property insurance renewal. Moved by Mrs. McCall's. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Terpstra. Any questions or comments? And it'll be approved with the amendment, not what's actually on, on line? Will we be changing that too?
We'll be switching. I just want to clarify, we'll be switching.
Workman's comp.
Oh, this is different than regular insurance. You would, you had mentioned that there was some outstanding claims and the fact that that kind of, um, in your email to us informing, is this the insurance, this is the insurance that covers workman's comp type of? Or is this different?
This is, this has workman's comp, it has our liability, it has our umbrella policies, property casualty. This is the over, the yes.
The big, everything.
The big. And so inside of this, uh, renewal, you have different carriers that take care of different components of it. So we are looking at switching the workman's comp. However, our current carrier is still responsible for any of the individuals that are currently, um, with those claims that we still have in process. The other ones that we're still working on is our umbrella and the, um, liability and casualty. Uh, the Astra switched their stop loss carrier. And so we're having conversations back and forth to see what we can do to come back better than the $100,000 increase. Any other questions, comments? Uh, do, how many carriers, carriers, carry school? Uh, it is getting less than us. But we are still looking at trying to utilize that next year. Uh, my recommendation is to go out and rebid it all.
We bid it last year.
Correct. But in talking to, it is the two you bid.
Well, the two people.
You only had two people come back. Yeah, Liberty and, um, Astra are the two, are the two. But my recommendation would be to go out next year because Astra was looking to get into the school business. So they, um, extremely had favorable bids. However, to try to get back up to that property value, uh, there was a big increase and some of the challenges that we've had this year also contributed to some of that. And so, uh, they're to a point where you get to go out and market again. Any other questions, comments? Seeing them, call the question. All those in favor of item 3D, approval of property insurance renewal, signify by raising your hand. 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, a full same sign?
Opposed because I feel that there are a lot of things that could have been done to mitigate a lot of these claims for this last year. Um, we wouldn't have such an increase in insurance. So my priority is, we don't want to prove paying for it because, because of claims in the name? No, I don't, I don't think that there's, well, it sounds like, and what we were, that information that we were provided is that there's an awful lot of, um, claims that have been made for their school district which has caused us to, this, um, is having our increase to be what percentage this year?
Uh, overall, I think it's about a 27% increase.
Yeah, and that's a pretty significant increase. So I'm not, not that I'm not in agreement with us carrying insurance. I just feel like as a district, we should be a little bit maybe, um, more conservative on what we're doing as a, as a district to even, um, improve insurance. No, 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 that's actually, you didn't have to finish my statement on that. Um, there, there are some certain things that have gone on in this district. And I know that the last attorney, Mr. Otis, had pointed this out that this was litigation and he pointed at me. No, I think that a lot of that could be, um, I, I just think that there was a lot of unnecessary claims that needed to be made directed towards me, which has caused our insurance to fall. And I think that's very unfortunate. So for that reason, I'll either abstain or not vote for it. But I just think that's, it's a shame that our insurance hasn't increased that much and that was the reason we were given.
Okay. Thanks to your comments, that motion passed 6-1. Next, uh, item is E, approval of the purchase of a, the combi? Combination, combination oven for Washington Township High School cafeteria. And it all depends who you ask. Some people call it a steamer. Okay, so we're just, uh, this is a oven that has been out. We've been trying to get fixed and so now we have the, uh, necessary quotes or bids so that, uh, we're asking the board to approve the purchase and installation of the new oven at Washington Township. Do I hear a motion for approval for the purchase of the combination oven for Washington Township High School cafeteria?
So move.
Moved by Mrs. Moore. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Mrs. Terpstra. Any questions or comments?
How long was this, um, combi oven out of commission?
It's not really out of commission, it's working. It's just, we've been getting to, to call out people to fix it right usually, so. They're putting on one more, he's fixing it and they can't get the parts to fix it, so. It is working at current.
It's currently working.
So we opted for the extended warranty for two years over one, is that correct?
Hmm, I don't believe that. It's left on the full side, so. That's just what comes with a manufacturer. I don't think that I get to take that.
Okay, and you're recommending C and T, right?
C, yeah, for the equipment and then H and T to do the logical upgrades.
Who said leaking water from both sides?
There's rust on, I mean, it's, you can't see it from the outside, but when you take the panels off, comes there, we're fixing it, you can see all the rust on the side of the service. It's 2001, so it's kind of, I don't know, it's useful life. Almost 25 years, so it's off.
Any other questions, comments? Seeing them, I'll call the question. All those in favor of approval of the purchase of the combination oven for Washington Township High School cafeteria, signify by raising your hand. 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, motion passes 7-0. Next item is approval of copier purchase and service agreement. So five years ago, we came to the board and we asked for our copiers. Uh, we were in a different financial state at that particular point in time and it served us best at that time. However, this year, we're asking for the board to approve us to allow the purchase of the copy machines outright. We've got some bond money left over from our 23 bond, which we would be able to do that. And in doing that, it takes the lease payment out of our operations, uh, expenditures, which allows us to, um, have less over there. And then the, uh, service program would only be, be the only thing taken out of the operations fund. So it allows us to reduce our spending out of our operations fund. So we're asking the board to approve the purchase of the new copy machines. Uh, we've started having more issues with them. We're at the end of our lease. It ends, uh, the end of this month anyway. And so it's a good time for us to do that. Do I hear a motion for approval of copier purchase and service agreement? And that would be with proven IT. Is there a motion?
So move.
Moved by Mrs. Star. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mrs. Moore. Any discussion, questions?
I did want to say, I personally liked the breakdown of the three, that kind of compared the three. So thank you very much. That made it very easy to look at the numbers compared to three of them. Um, I just did want to clarify, we'll be saving because we're going to get rid of the, um, the times to get rid of fax lines, is that correct?
Correct, there will be an additional part of that as well. So our fax lines will no longer be needed. We can do them over IP.
Okay. Um, yeah, it's like 170 a month, I would be, so that's switching. And then I saw on here, um, that it's a five-year licensure with paper cuts. So that's going to be the 17,000. Um, and then we have, right now we currently use paper cut, we do not use, we do. You know, that's what I saw when I looked through the mailbox, just to make sure it's still used. Um, will there be any additional training that would use the paper cut for this usage? And it's the same though.
It's the same, because basically they'll come up, they'll swipe their card and then it'll, um, just release the documents. The other part that's not in there that Kim was able to lock down today is they have locked in their service fees, um, for the next three years for our, um, and then, uh, to, to increase no more than 9%. So not that they will be increasing, but they have locked that in to say that, because we all know inflation goes up, but we're guaranteed for the next three years with a learning factor of 9% after that three years. Any other questions, comments? Seeing them, I'll call the question. All those in favor of approval for copier purchase and service agreements, signify by raising your hand. 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, motion passes 7-0. Next item is G, approval to declare zero value for technology equipment. So we're asking the board to, um, approve just the, most of them on the access points that were, um, replaced earlier this fall. And there's a couple of, um, dead phone books and stuff. Do I hear a motion for approval to declare zero value for technology equipment?
So move.
Moved by Mrs. McCall's. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mrs. Moore. Any questions or discussion? Sing, go ahead.
What will end up happening to the, um, robberies?
All the access points?
Yeah. We recycle them.
Okay, any other questions, comments? Seeing them, I'll call the question. All those in favor of approval to declare zero value for technology equipment, signify by raising your hand. 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, so motion passes 7-0. Next item is H, approval to create a high school and elementary positions for applied skills program. So currently, all, all of our students that would be coming to East Porter either go to Boone Road or Valparaiso for the applied skills program. We do not have that. One of our goals has been to try to get our students back here at East Porter. Currently, and I don't know if you put this in the memo or not, I know there are 20 students, um, total, like nine and 11. Um, there's nine at the elementary or 11 or it's twice person. So, um, we're looking at having an elementary and a middle school, high school. And we're asking the board to approve it so that we can continue with our planning process. But we want to make sure that we get the positions posted and, um, and start putting things into place and get the right people so that we can fill these positions. The money that we will be saving, um, just while we spend at Boone Grove alone will be more than enough just to make up the difference, um, for hiring these people here in. At Kim's. Do I hear a motion to create high school and elementary positions for applied skills program?
Alleviate.
Moved by Mrs. Moore. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mrs. Terpstra. Is there, are there any questions or comments?
I have some questions. Would this, um, alleviate every single line item on the Boone Township, um, claims list? Or would we still be, would there still be some shared services?
There could be shared services, but I cannot think off of the top of my head.
Director.
Oh, the director. Yes, thank you. Cheryl Wood.
Are we still, um, I know that the law had changed regarding licensure for directors. They are no longer in need of a director's license. Um, is there something that we could do in-house as opposed to having a director of special education services? For example, Mrs. Schnick is, um, she has special education background and I cannot remember your credentials offhand, but would, would that be something that we could pull over to our district as opposed to paying for shared services at, at, um, through, um, Boone Township?
With the current workloads, that would not be my recommendation.
Okay. Um, are we also going to be pulling over? I know you, you stated applied skills, but will we also be pulling over the alternative school as well?
Uh, we are looking, the alternative school is being, uh, just, or is being broken up. So each of the different schools are looking to create programs in their own districts.
Okay, so we would be included in that too. What about the, um, would this alleviate any of our claims, um, for Porter County Education Services?
No, that's those.
Because that would all be shared. Because that would all be shared, like through like OT.
Yeah, there will still be shared services.
So we're working, the, the biggest, I guess.
It's about $240,000, yeah.
Okay, but the biggest savings right here that we're looking at with creating these new positions for applied skills would be this partnership that we've had with Boone Township. Does that, or is there more?
Uh, Porter Township.
Porter Township.
Because Boone, Boone Township is different, that's where, um, the EH program is housed. And we're looking just applied skills.
And that would be through Porter Township.
And we would also be pulling students in from Valpo as well. We have students that, from Washington Township, that there are shared services at TJ and Valpo High School. Those students would also be coming in and Quirk's Quarters.
Quirk's Quarters as well.
Yeah, I don't think I see Valpo on here, so that's why. Or quarterly. Okay, gotcha, okay.
Any other questions, comments?
I just want to see clarification.
I, um, the question she, that Natalie was posing was that this, this approval will also talk about alternative school.
This approval is not there, but we are looking at doing something different for alternative school.
Okay, thank you.
Stay tuned.
Well, and then the reason I asked that was because the way that it is set up, was set up when I was a teacher at Washington and I don't know how many times, and Morgan, I don't know how many times this has, or what has changed since then, but it was, um, applied skills in the afternoon and alternative school was in that same room, but in the morning. So that's not, that's not the case anymore, okay.
Okay, there are no other questions, comments, and I'll call the question. All those in favor of approval to create high school and elementary positions for applied skills programs, signify by raising your hand. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, motion passes seven zero. Next, next item, next item, do I hear a motion, approval to move funds into CDs?
Mrs. McCall, you want to talk a little bit about this?
Um, so with interest rates just declining, we would expect another, like, cut this week, probably, oh, Wednesday. Um, looking to kind of, uh, put some of our money in from our general fund, our general bank account into CDs in our, in our, so in, uh, shorter term CDs that we can cash away. Make sure I said we're gonna do some pretty good.
So do I hear a motion for approval to move funds into CDs? Moved by Mrs. McCall's, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Mrs. Starr. Any questions or comments?
I think that's a smart move. Good thinking ahead.
Been a roller coaster, hasn't it?
Yes.
Any other questions, comments? Seeing them, I'll call the question, all those in favor of approval to move funds into CDs, signify by raising your hand. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, motion passes seven zero. Next item or closing items, is there any board member discussion?
I actually do have a discussion item that I would like to, uh, open up. Um, I think Natalie's been telling her points and things that she wants to ask, um, on the claims list. And I again appreciate the things you bring when you want to look at perspective and you want to do things. Um, I just wanted to clarify though, um, that one of the requests recently that you had asked for, um, and it was, you know, made to us that, hey, these are, what are you looking for, and you're looking for them, and that's fine, that's what you need to feel proving them. But one of them, um, specifically, there's actually a couple of, just an idea, um, one of them, one of them actually is something we approved as a board and it was on a board meeting. So on June 9th, we approved items, like every item. It was, um, specifically the request for the Williams Crow. And on that, um, back on the June meeting, um, they talked about, um, the inputs, the portable consoles, the power cords, the components. It tells you every dime that we have spent and why we have spent it, it was on a board meeting. And I know you felt like you didn't have it and weren't given it, but it's actually.
Well, but sometimes ones claims come through, they're different and sometimes that thing are added and there's like the.
I, I, no, I agree, but this is what exactly now, it's too, too many.
Okay, but there's 200 items on the claim list.
There's 2,000, there's 1,000, like 1,500 to 2,000 every month.
I just wanted to clarify, you may have made a yield on the detailed claims list of your view.
There's not 2,000 items on here.
Not on there, on the other attachment on board docs.
Okay, but I'm asking about, like, I've asked for eight invoices on a claims list of 200. So I'm just letting you know that, I mean, and, and things change, like, I mean, the, the EZ, um, certainly was called blackout CD, you know. It is, it is concerning to me that we have this superintendent that doesn't know what that was. Um, but I mean, you might be able to pick out something that was given to me in June and you also know that I was out for medical reasons around that time as well. So that could have been missed, but regardless, I don't think that it's much to ask for four invoices the month before, eight invoices the, you know, following month and being told that we have to make an APR request to get that information. Now, this, this week, um, we were given the claims list and the agenda later than normal. So I did not, um, specifically request those things because, um, I believe that how long would an APR request take to process?
An APR, it all depends on what the current workload is.
So, but I mean, getting it a claims list on Friday evening as opposed to Thursday morning.
You've got it Thursday afternoon.
Yeah, I'm just, we're, I mean, but we're talking about hours of difference, right? So I'm just letting you know that, again, I'm not trying to be adversarial just to be that, but, you know, I don't think that these are, that these requests that I've made, um, would have put that much pressure on our central office to give us these claims lists. I'm assuming that they are, when we have claims lists that are in here and, you know, as we've stated, there's a million dollars, of, of, over a million dollars of claims. To ask for four of them or eight of them, I don't think that that would be much of an ask. And again, and I don't think I stated this at the last meeting, I've gotten those things in the past February, March, April, and they were, they weren't that many invoices. Just as a board member to understand what it is that we're, that we're approving. Um, and then somehow, somewhere that, there wasn't a policy change, but there was what you call the practice change. So I just, I find that really odd still.
We discussed that at the May meeting. What did we did? Practice change.
There was a practice change, right, okay, but you can't just change your practice without voting on it.
Policy.
So you guys just decided that we're no longer, we're going to be able to get invoices because a few board members decided that there would be a practice change?
I'm pointing out that this was an invoice, this is what, what.
From June.
Correctly, we paid it with an RDC grant that we also approved later. So in June, we got the, the quote of what it was going to cost us. And in July, we approved, um, the meeting's minutes. And then in November, we were paying it with the RDC grant.
Okay, but you have that, and why didn't you just say?
I just pulled it up.
Should be a message, I'm just letting you know that that wasn't the only one that I asked for.
Yeah, I know, there was, there was other ones and I understand those are things you felt you needed, but I mean, make the rest of us seem like we're invalid by just saying, hey, that's not what I need to approve this. You, I don't need what, the information you're requesting, I don't need it. So that's okay, but that, that's fine that you want to request it, I'm just letting you know there are invoices, you make it sound like we're voting without knowing.
Well, no, well, we are voting without invoices, that's just one. I mean, right now, we have things that have changed, I mean, that are very vague descriptions and we're not being able to, I mean, I, again, I would, I would love to, excuse me. I would love to be able to state that I support our staff in making, um, a purchase at Menards for $2,000. I would love to be able to say that, but if I wanted to ask for that, receive that invoice as a board member to feel comfortable in voting on this as we had in our first few months, in my first few months of being on the board, I don't think that that's a, a large ask to be able to ask for that.
May I point out to you, on board docs, under the claims list, there's a public comment, content, which includes what you have printed off, which is the summary. Underneath it, in the executive, it says summary, board claims. If you go in and open that up, that's where you'll see between 1,500 to 2,000 each individual charge for the entire month of all the claims we have. And there will be a comment, because Kim touches every single one of them with a little note about what it's for. Maybe that will help clarify?
I don't think that mine doesn't open up to that. And I don't know if it's.
I've taken that and dumped it for every month for this entire year, so that I can have a better understanding of where we're spending our money and how it's trending.
Is this a matter of my computer doesn't have the correct software on it?
I am happy to take a look after the meeting and make sure you can access this, but it's in here and there's a comment. This is Excel, but you can view it and well, this is.
But these aren't, these are still, these are still not line item.
They, they're every check that goes out.
I understand they're every check that goes out, but I'm not concerned about the, 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 that's not my concern.
But it's grouped at this higher level, like this is the detailed view of this. I think this might have what you're looking for.
One of you two get together after the meeting here and see if we can.
Can I walk you through it?
I, you're welcome to walk me through it, but these, I, I guess, again, my, my concern isn't that this other way of viewing things in a different way that still isn't invoices, that still isn't. It's still different than what I was provided in February, March, April, May, whenever I requested invoices, which again, were not that many, so.
Point, point well taken.
Can I make one more question to Experin?
Yes, sure.
1,500 to 2,000 invoices across her desk every month. To then ask her to go back month after month for four or eight, whatever filing system she has, to take time out of whatever work she is currently doing that day to pull those, that takes time and energy. So my question back to you would be, from the invoices you pulled earlier in the year, what did it show you? What were your causes for concern to continue asking for those?
My causes to concern are that we should be fully informed as board members. And whenever I ask those things from Kim, she gets them to me from within minutes. Kim, how long does it take for you to get them?
Minutes is it, right? It depends on what I'm doing, right? Like, right now, I'm doing the budget, I'm doing plans, I'm doing these other contract negotiations, things I'm doing, you can see every meeting, how many things I'm doing. Yes, but that's, I think what Audrey's saying is what, what do you think you're going to get from these invoices? Because in our policy, right, I am given the authority to make purchases on behalf of our school corporation. So if we need to go through every invoice or a lot of invoices and, and.
I don't think, I don't.
I don't really have that authority.
I don't really consider eight invoices to be a lot of.
But a lot of those, like, like Booker Tech, that's something that we approved a long.
I didn't ask for.
You asked for things through the RDC grant that we approved, you guys, of those eight, I think half of them were already approved by you guys at a different time. And so you have the information, I have the authority to make the purchase, I feel like I don't if you're going to come back and that's.
I'm like, oh, you can't do that, because I've already made that purchase, I've already expended it, I have to pay for it now.
So all you're doing is approving the payment. If you're not going to approve the payments, or I'm going to be concerned about that, and I don't have that authority and I can't do like.
I just, I don't think that Booker Tech charges us, we get came out every month, because there are extra things and I see extra.
It's like the detail, I think.
But there's also additional tax services that we use, so there's like additional tax, there's some, there's some that are just very vague that say, um, you know, fixed equipment or, um, I mean, professional services and these are like kind of vague names that I haven't heard of before. And again, you know, I understand that you are busy and I respect your time, but I'm not asking for 200 or 1,000 invoices. I've asked of line item invoices.
I appreciate, this is ours, I appreciate.
You know, Mr. Experin, I find it odd that for some reason.
When you're dominating the meeting here, we're going to move on or?
I'm answering her question.
Okay, well, we can.
I just don't, I don't appreciate that, I feel like some board members are held to a different standard. For example, last month, we had a speaker, wait a second.
We're not going to discuss.
But you, you were able to ask the question during public comment, now what I tried to ask the question, you didn't allow me to.
I'm going to say that. We're going to move on, this is board member discussion, are there any other board?
That was, that was a board member discussion.
Okay.
I do have something I'd like to say. Um, I'm very excited about special ed, thank you so much, and it's such a big deal for our district and I'm super, super excited. And I'm very, very happy about that, so.
I hope you touch.
Okay.
Any other board members?
Am I allowed to say one more thing? They did have one thing that wasn't, I, I actually.
Let's go through and let other board members say something, we'll come back.
I was responding to your questions.
Mrs. Valasas will come back to you.
It's actually SAW, it doesn't have an S at the end of it.
Okay, is there any other board member that has any other comments? I, I would just like to say it was a really positive, uh, or that counts toward, and then, how about this for Washington Township? On Wednesday, December the 3rd, Mr. Randy Fiegola of Washington Township Middle School was named the 2025 Indiana Middle Level Academic Coach of the Year. And Jill Slanker, Director of the Department of Student Programs of the Indiana Association of School Principals, came to Washington Township Middle School for the presentation, an award well deserved, and isn't this the second year in a row?
Two, two years in a row, Washington Township coaches won that award. So Mr. Atwood won it last year and unfortunately, Bremen, or Bremen, uh, had done that once before back in the 90s, had back-to-back academic coaches of the year.
So a lot of great stuff going on.
Well deserved.
Okay, anybody else?
Am I allowed to now?
Certainly.
Um, there's been a lot of chatter in the community about the videos that went out. And, um, in the very fourth video, um, Dr. Case, I noticed that you had stated there was some misinformation spread, um, regarding these videos. And I just have a question to ask, Mrs. Schnick and Ms. Nieves, have you, um, did you go to Couch School and let them know that, um, you were going, there was going to be the possibility of shutting down Morgan School?
That did not come from us, no.
That didn't come from you?
No.
So if the staff members, multiple staff members at Couch had let people know, various people.
Did not come from us.
So where did that information come from?
There is no plan to shut down Morgan, I don't think anyone said that.
You don't think anybody said that?
No.
We did not say that.
We did not say.
How would that mean staff members hear that or perceive it that way?
I believe there was some discussion amongst staff members, making some thoughts back and forth, that never came from our presentation.
It never came from your presentation?
Never.
So why was the, um, when we had talked about our strategic plan and moving forward, there was a different video that was recorded, right? A different fourth video? You had four videos recorded and then one was delayed, and now there's a survey with this video, but what was going to be in that, in that original fourth video?
I don't know.
Oh, you're not sure, weren't you there to record it?
No, I mean, I don't know which one you're talking about, there were multiple different things.
The fourth video where you had said, we're not going towards consolidation, but we are going to be discussing that in the fourth video.
The email said that, but we were before, that was, that email went out before our video was even going to get recorded. We were putting out what was possibly coming next. You watched the whole video and stopped.
Right, but you had said that, you had said that, that that was going to be coming and the fourth video was going to be talking about consolidation. And the strategic plan says on it that.
Sure, the strategic plan, and this board has discussed multiple options, what is in front of us?
But my point is that there was no misinformation. The original fourth video was going to state something along the lines of consolidating and, and from what I've heard from the staff at Couch, which was multiple staff members, they had been informed that Morgan would be the one to be shut down and that would be the way, that would be, so I just, I find it really hard.
Go back to your sources and ask them who said that. Because what original fourth video, did anyone else see an original fourth video, said only one was put out?
But we were told what was in the original fourth video and then it had to be re-recorded.
We sliced many things together to create that fourth video, so.
I'm confused with your point you're trying to make, so they went with a different direction for the fourth video that.
No, I just feel like we shouldn't be saying there was misinformation, because the community watched those first three videos and it was confusing. And then we have teachers from Couch saying that, and staff members from Couch saying that Morgan is, is potentially going to be shut down. And they said that information came from Mrs. Schnick and Mrs. Nieves.
Go back and ask them who said that.
We're going to come and talk about, we didn't say that. And I thought I asked you, I was to clarify, if someone had thought there was, you said the first three videos were confusing and I asked how we could change that and how we could make it better. Because if it was confusing to people, I'd like to improve that, that maybe was taken our non-intention. I had asked you, hey, what do you think we could do better on the video?
I don't remember being asked that question, at least not in a, a way that was not, um, it just wasn't a very, that wasn't a very pleasant meeting, let's just put it that way behind closed doors. So I don't remember being asked that, but I, I, I don't think that, I think that we're not giving the community enough credit for being able to connect the dots that comes to the, the, the original videos that were put out. Um, I don't feel like there was misinformation, um, being spread within the community. I feel like there was a different plan that was going, that was moving forward to move to two schools as opposed to three. And now the community is going to be, we're going to be getting their input, which I think is great, but that was not the original plan from what I gathered in speaking with.
There was no plan. There was no plan.
There was never a plan.
Well, there's a, but you have a strategic plan online right now that says you could essentially move to two schools. So there was a plan.
There is no plan. The only thing that the strategic plan says is that there was going to be conversation about how we move forward. And that's something that is, that's what the plan says.
The plan says we're going to keep it as one school, or sorry, have it, keep it at three schools, two schools, or three schools. So there really is no plan.
Exactly.
But I'm just saying, but, but I'm just saying that, that, but there wasn't a saying or discussion or anything like that. It was just, these are, this is our strategic plan. And then, you know, we're hearing from, and again, I mean, I, I find it really hard to believe that many staff members, that many people that were, that were there would receive that any differently than we were planning on shutting down a school.
Well, that's what the whole, I mean, of the fourth one was to hopefully clarify some of.
Well, I hope so too, but I don't, I, I understand that.
The fourth one out, and that's the only fourth one that went out.
But there was another fourth one reported before.
Actually, there were three other fourth ones.
We're slicing all kinds of things together, yeah, to make it smooth.
But, but it wasn't to make it smooth. It was to make it known to the community that that was the direction we're moving forward in.
Actually, the other ones didn't have a plan in there. There was questions about how to move forward. That's, and so, yes, there were multiple video fours. And I will tell you, I spent hours on those because I don't even like doing them. And so putting them together, we wanted to make sure that the community got the information. And that's why we did the four, as was one of my goals for the year, was to try to better communicate information to the community.
And if I could read the, the, um, piece that you're referring to. Under maximize efficient operations for a priority number five, the goal was to find smart ways to stretch dollars without compromising student experience. Um, multiple initiatives for us to explore and look at as a board, and we've been very transparent about that. And that last one says, explore different options for building structures, slash consolidation in one high school, comma, two K-12 buildings, slash, or maintain the three with the referendum option. Explore was the word that was used. And this is exactly what was presented at Couts.
And then I just want to clarify, I mean, you're a board member. You have the opportunity to be with all of us and we have, we have discussions. No one's discussing, um, or even pretending like we're discussing shutting buildings down or closing buildings. That doesn't exist. Like, that's never been discussed as an option to.
That's really completely different than what was stated.
We've not agreed.
Correct.
We didn't agree, but that was not.
We have to have an open discussion. If we're not looking at honest answers and honest questions that exist within the district, yes, you have to explore. That does exist. Hundred percent explore them.
So, I'm, I'm just, I, I find it really hard to believe that an entire staff of.
Who are these people?
People that were in this meeting with Mrs. Nieves and Mrs. Schnig. And they said that if any of this building were going to be closed down, it would be Morgan.
They did not say that.
Okay, but I'm just letting you know that, and I guess they're, I guess they're lying then.
I think they're liars.
I'm not, I'm just saying, well.
I think miscommunication, misunderstanding. I hope you clarified it. I said, that's not what's being discussed. I mean, that's just clarification to say, hey, maybe people accidentally misinterpret things. That's how Chinese telephone works. I mean, taking something that gets twisted in turn. So just simply saying, I mean, I'm glad you're clarifying it. I think this is a public and appropriate, transparent way to do it. I'm just saying, you're almost insinuating as if we're still hiding something that.
Well, I just, I understand that there was, there was a different video and then there was a delay. And then there's a rerecording of the video. But the original video, you had stated that that was when we were going to be talking about consolidation. That was stated to us in that meeting.
To you?
Yes.
What's that?
That we was going to, to possibly to two schools.
We weren't even close to recording a video at that, any, any time at that point.
You had already recorded it and said it was going to be pushed out, but then you were going to delay it. Because it's not, Mr. Martin, did you not hear that?
I didn't hear it that way, Natalie. I heard, I heard that there are options being explored that I don't agree with.
Right, and then.
But, but that, that's my right to disagree as a board member, to try and reflect where I'm at. I don't, I didn't listen to the fourth video, so I don't know, Natalie, what, what it says. Well, one, one of the, one of the things that I want to say is, I've requested things in the past, but I always do it prior to a board meeting, not with the intention of trying to embarrass anyone for the purpose of me getting the information. I haven't done that recently because I have enough faith in administration that I trust them. I understand why you would ask for things. And I have, I have some difference of opinion of, I, I think that information that is requested is probably given to us in different formats. I don't, I get it. By paper, anybody that's ever seen my stack, I read it all. I can't imagine what reading that on a computer screen would be like. It has to be long. But if there's detail, for instance, to the claims list, that, that Audrey could help you to get, that would alleviate that. I, I'm just saying, to alleviate that. I, I don't have a problem even with the asking for some, for some things. I think clarification is good on some of the things. I just think we need to try and work together to make sure that information is received in such a way that it isn't just used as a, a lever to try and create strife in some way. And sometimes that's how you come across.
Well, nowadays, but this has also been four months of asking for things and not getting it.
I'm just saying that if there's a way to find the answers to what you're asking without putting Kim through the hassle of having to get it, I have no problem with you asking for the things. If there's a way for you to get the answers, that's fine.
My question is, why was it easily provided to me when I first became a board member and now it's not?
I don't know an answer to that.
Either. And that's, I think that's the biggest issue here because I didn't make an issue of it the first two times I was declined the information. But the last two times, I did make an issue of it. Because it hasn't been, there hasn't been a policy change. There hasn't been, you can call it a practice change, but where was that practice change decided? Was it voted upon?
If anybody's leaving here, once here, we can have the discussion further later. But now, is there any additional items from the superintendent? I just have one. We have an anonymous donation for $800 at Washington Township to be utilized towards the dance. So again. For what? For the uniforms. Got it, got it, got it, okay. And so just again, the, um, the gratitude for the generosity of our community, even though even with what you saw earlier tonight, that would not have taken place without, um, the generosity and the work and collaboration with our community members. And that's all I have for you. And this is our last meeting before Christmas. So I just like to wish all of you a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. And a Happy New Year. But did I hear a motion for adjournment? Oops, I missed. Second. But this is first. All those in favor of adjournment, signify by raising your hand. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, zero.